Hello. You have to say everybody.
I don't know. There's nobody upstairs.
There you are.
I guess we're just missing one. Okay, we're ready. That clock and this clock is off. So I'll go with the red clock. All right, folks. Okay, call the, good evening, everyone. I call the city council meeting for Wednesday, August 10th, 2022 to order. A lot of things to think about here and everywhere. Whatever's on your mind, we'll have a moment of silence for you to think about those. Thank you. Alderman Jobin, please lead us all in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, Alderman Jobin. Brian Krupp, our city, deputy city clerk, please call the roll for tonight.
Dunn?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
McGinnis?
Here.
Lee?
Grip?
Here.
Condon?
Here.
Cornet?
Here.
Dickman?
Jobin?
Here.
And Ortiz?
Here.
Nine?
Present, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. So again, good evening, everyone. As we begin the meeting of the city council, again, like to welcome everybody in attendance and anybody who's following through any particular electronic device. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, but please keep in mind that as you share your thoughts and opinions, you're sharing them with all your fellow Davenporters and anybody throughout the region. We're happy you're participating in your city government and ask that your participation, please reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport a better place, especially for the folks in here. Reminder, if you have a cellphone, please put it on silent or shut it off just simply so it doesn't get in any, any way of anybody talking. If you wish to address the council on any particular item, please come to the podium, the microphone's above you. Please address the council as a body and not as in, in any individual. You'll have five minutes. Please stay attuned to the agenda, and we thank you for your comments. Let's see. We will be respectful of you. Please be respectful of us. Thank you. Will an Alderman, please move approval of the city council meeting minutes for July 27th. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. City Administrator, Ms. Spiegel, any update?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you. Will an Alderman, please move approval of the report of the committee of the whole for August 3rd? Motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Very good. We have two appointments this evening, one on historic preservation and one on the zoning board of adjustment. I'll read both and then ask for a motion to approve. Historic preservation commission, John Higgins, is a new appointment. Zoning board of adjustment, Michael, Michael Gallier is a new appointment. Is there a motion to approve? Motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Very good. Petition communications, any from any particular Alder folks? Alderwoman McGinnis, I see you, Ms. Lee.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to let everyone know that there will be a third ward meeting on Monday, August 15th, here in council chambers. It's regular day and time, 6:30 PM, and Mayor Mattson will be our guest, and we hope to see you then. So again, that's Monday, August 15th, 6:30 PM, right here. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you very much. I just want to remind people that tomorrow night is Party in the Park at the Eighth Ward Ridgeview Park up on North Pine. There will be fun and games and food and city folks and community folks, and I believe Alderman Dunn will be shooting off water rockets. Yeah, yeah. So that'll be the Eighth Ward meeting for August. We won't have another meeting in August. Then we zoom the meetings again in September. And I also was down at Credit Island the other day, and there were 10 beautiful white herons along the causeway, just as you go onto the island. So there's your, your nature for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. Alderman Ortiz.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to thank the Davenport Police Department, the Davenport Fire Department, Shawn Loder, the Fair Board, and all the residents of Davenport for another successful year at the fair. Unfortunately, Mother Nature kind of threw us a couple curveballs in there, but overall, very happy. Fourth Ward residents, very, very thankful. You were very understanding. Like I said, hats off to everybody that was involved. Like I said, it's a great event here in Davenport, and I look forward to seeing it next year. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Ortiz. Alderman Kelly.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. I want to let everybody know that on August 28th, the Fifth Ward and the Sixth Ward will be having a back-to-school giveaway at Studio 7 on Middle Road. It's where Fifth and Sixth Ward butt up to each other, so I won't be having a ward meeting this month because I'll be having a back-to-school giveaway with Alderman Jobin. So if you're interested in that, just look us up online, and it will be out there, the information for you folks. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly. Alderman Condon.
I want to observe a, a fun occasion that happened yesterday. My family was in attendance yesterday in Dyersville, Iowa, at the Field of Dreams when the River Bandits took to the field as the Davenport Blue Sox. And that was the first time that they were playing under that moniker since 1937. And they were one of two teams that were the first minor league teams to play on, on that great stage. So I wanted to thank the River Bandits organization, the players, and I want to thank the players specifically for bringing home the win. And they all represented us really well on a national stage. Wanted to celebrate the great relationship that we've had with the River Bandits over the years in keeping baseball here in Davenport. There's still a lot of great baseball to enjoy down at Modern Woodman Park. It's a good reminder for me to get my family down to the ballpark. And here's the cool thing about baseball, I think I had myself convinced on the way up there that my family was a great baseball family, and then in trying to explain the plot of that movie to my kids, my dad was like, wasn't Patrick Swayze and Demi Moore in that? And I was like, no, that's a ghost, not Field of Dreams, it's Ghost. But that's the cool thing about baseball, like when, if you go up there, the emotions are real, whether you're a baseball family or not, whether you saw that movie or not, and you can't mess up baseball. So whether you're a baseball family or not, please get down to Modern Woodman Park and cheer on the River Bandits and help, help us celebrate this fun occasion. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Anyone else? Very good. Okay, we'll move to individual approval of items on the discussion agenda. The first item is a first consideration ordinance for case REZ 2204, being the request of SCI Iowa Funeral Services to rezone 1200 East 39th Street from SOS Open Space District to C1 Neighborhood District. Planning and zoning recommends denial, so eight votes of the council are required for passage. Is there any public with comment? Seeing none, will an Alderman move force consideration? Okay. Any discussion from council? Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. The issue here for me is not that it's going to be from the SCI Iowa Funeral Services, it's not the kind of use, it's that I think the city needs to make sure that it considers and protects the precious open space, the, the zoning that we have for open space. So as this moves forward, that is going to be my primary consideration for this particular thing, the protection of open space and not changing it to a commercial district. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee, and I apologize to staff. Laura, you have an update for council concerning your discussions with the petitioner? So I'll go out of little order here and let her update.
Thank you very much, Laura Berkeley Development Neighborhood Services. I did have the opportunity to have an additional meeting with the petitioners, and I, I believe I have a solution that is mutually beneficial to both the petitioner and the city. We have not done this under the new code, but we do have a planning tool that could be applied to this. It's called a plan unit development. In this case, I recommend that the zoning district remain open space, but we apply the plan unit development tool to provide some flexibility within that zoning district to allow for a reception facility. What triggers that ability to do so is the provision of a public benefit that the petitioner would provide. And so we've had that discussion, and they are willing to provide some level of public benefit to the city, and, and I think that is a, it will end up being a mutually beneficial experience for the city and the petitioner.
Thank you. So Mr. Warner, so is the recommendation to delete this and then go back to P and Z? Or to amend it and go back to P and Z?
Your Honor, the recommendation would be, since it's changing the approach, that the council, someone on the council make a motion to refer it back to the plan and zoning.
Roger that. Okay, so I'm gonna go through everybody's comments, and if somebody wants to do that, buzz in at the end, and I'll take you at the end. So, okay. Alderman Grip.
I, I was going to request a report from staff, and I'm happy to make the motion as the chair.
So I'll see, anybody else want to discuss this, or are you good with the motion? Okay, so I'll go back to you, Alderman Grip.
All right. First, I want to, Laura, thank you. I knew that with a reasonable petitioner and a reasonable ask, that the city, the city staff would be able to come up with a recommendation that, that worked for both of us. So with that, I'm going to make a motion to refer this issue back to planning and zoning.
Okay, so there's a motion on the referral to planning zoning. Any discussion from colleagues? Very good. Brian, please call the roll for the motion to go back to planning and zoning.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Jobin?
Yes.
Lee? Condon?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Cornet? Dunn?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
And Grip? And yeses, Your Honor.
A motion approving community investment settlement agreement with Canadian Pacific Railway Company and authorizing the city minister just signed the same. Is there any public with comment? So again, and I'd ask if there's more, if one person could stand up like over here so I know there's more coming. If not, I'm going to assume there's not. So if at least one person's standing and you guys can work that out, I'll at least know another one's coming. So again, name, ward, address. If you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. You have five minutes, and thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council, my name is Andy Cummings. I am with Canadian Pacific. I am from Minneapolis. I am pleased to present this agreement to you this evening. We are a company that has operated in this community for a very long time. It is our intent to continue operating here for a very long time. We are in it for the long haul. When you see a Canadian Pacific train operating through Davenport, it is likely staffed out of Davenport. The people who maintain the track safely for train operations are likely based here in Davenport. So we're very invested in this community. We're currently hiring. We have a hiring fair coming up for high-paying union jobs that will be next week. We're hiring approximately 100 people just this year. If we're able to move forward with this merger, we anticipate more hiring in future years. With that, I will take my seat, but I am happy to address any questions from the council that will come up this evening.
Thank you. If they want, they'll call you up.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
Hello, my name is PJ Slabodun, Third Board, and I have some concerns about this merger and more specifically along the waterfront. We found that some of the trains that would be going through may be as long as two miles, which is a very, when you think about it, a very long time, and carrying possible hazardous materials. So the wait time down on the riverfront could be a very long time, and with everything that's going on down there, this would prove to be a real problem. I'm concerned about accidents, about medical emergencies. If you think about the kinds of things that are going on down at the waterfront, you've got the Modern Woodman Games going on, Van Shell has concerts all summer, the Quad City Symphony, and also the cruise ships that are docking. And I don't know how people off, that are getting off the cruise ships and have to wait for a train are going to be very happy about that. It would also impact the economy down there, because I would think that people would just get tired of not knowing where to park or how to get across the tracks and so forth. So that may start to limit attendance at some of these things. The $8 million that's in discretionary are part of those plans to build vehicle spans over or under the tracks. Seems like that's the only logical, safe answer that you would have, and I, I'm interested in knowing how the council would address this. Emergency vehicles, are they going to wait two minutes? Are they going to wait 10 minutes? Are they going to wait half an hour? And whichever of those it is, isn't that too long to wait in an emergency? I don't know, and I haven't seen anything about whether spans would be built or how, how this would be addressed, but I think the public would like to know. Another concern is the noise. Even if the sirens are addressed, there's still other noise going on with the number of trains going through. The train itself, a lot of times you have the squealing going on on the tracks, and I live only a block from the train tracks on, that go by on Fifth Street. And even from a block away, if a train is going through, you just can't talk or hear anything that's going on, and this is a big concern also. I don't think the $10 million will solve the challenge, and I see it only as a Band-Aid kind of a thing that may help for a little bit. But if you reject this, you will be making an important statement that the city of Davenport can be the David in a David and Goliath situation. So I hope you take time to read the reports, to hold public hearings, and to attend this September 13th meeting. Give more time to study the pitfalls, and please, don't give up your waterfront. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Susan Leihausen. I'm a concerned citizen. With the, with the merger, we're gonna have increased train traffic coming, coming to the Quad Cities. Naturally, we can expect increased accidents and derailment. The, the report that was released last week tell us that the vehicle to, to train accident will increase from 19.1 to 24.9. That's a 30% increase of car accidents with the train. And the pedestrian train crash is gonna go from 1.9 to like 2.1. That's a 23% increase. So this number is way too, too high for, for our, our level of comfort. And the report also said that there is a very, the spill of, the spill hazardous material, the release of hazardous material is pretty, will remain low. Well, the fact is, in the year 2022, their Canadian Pacific have, so far has five derailments, and one of which resulted in the release of 44,000, 400,000 gallons of crude oil, and which ended up with a fire, the burn for 24 hours, and it took two days of firefighter, firefighters' work to, to put it out. And it damaged an area that's big, larger than five acres. So that's, that's, that's about the spill. In, in, in 2019, there was also a derailment that occurred in, in British Columbia, that a CP train derail, lost control because of break, faulty brakes, ran down, ran down the mountain, a steep mountain, and derailed into a creek and killing three people, three of their employees. And there has been a lot of controversy surrounding the investigation of this accident. The Canadian, Canadian broadcast system has made a documentary movie, film about this, about this investigation. So I encourage you, go take a look at that. You go to the CBC website and call up Run a Ray Train, Investigating a CP Rail Crash. So it's 20, it's a 22-minute film. It kind of give you an idea of how's Canadian Pacific take care of the faulty equipment and, and how they do accident investigation. This one caused a fatality of three people. As city leaders, we know that you're concerned about the welfare of our citizens, otherwise you wouldn't be, wouldn't be sitting here. And I urge you to take a look at Canadian Pacific commitment to safety, to equipment opera, to equipment maintenance, to, to, to see how they address faulty equipment. Do they fix them right away, or do they just let it go and let the, just let the train run? We, we are, we're living in the community that's right along the riverfront. We cannot afford to have this type of an accident. Now, this is a $31 million, a billion-dollar project. The mer, this merger is a $31 billion project. They are dangling a carrot in front of us that's worth about 0.3% of that, of that pot of money, and tell us that, well, you're gonna have to deal with all the risks that come along. And $10 million cannot, can, is only a part of what, what, what is gonna take for us to mitigate the potential hazards from coming in from this, this pro, from this project. And we need, we need to, and also to beef up our emergency response team, come up with an emergency response plan to, to address future accident that's come along. I don't want an oil spill in this community. I don't think anybody, anyone of you here or any one of us citizens does too. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Do you have a ward or address?
I'm, I live in 5237 Remington.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Carol Ennis. I live in Ward 7, and my address is 328 West Columbia Avenue. I'm here first to ask you all when you have to vote. When does CP say that the vote has to be taken in order to get this $10 million?
So ma'am, we're listening to you here. We're not going back and forth, so thank you.
Okay. And, okay. So if you do not accept the proposal, will CP not be responsible for any issues that might occur or any expenses related to doing this project? That's a question. And how will it affect you personally, each one of you? Do you live by the railroad, or do you have a business by the railroad? How do your constituents feel about it? Do you get prim, have you had primarily positive or negative reviews? Are y'all more familiar with some of this terminology than I? I'm concerned about, okay, first. I thought that the OEA that performed the EIS was a separate environmental group, but it works, it's part of STP, which to me says it's not, it's not the perfect review board to decide whether this is a good idea or not. I have questions about the, the delays. According to this, it says that bill will be at, at the biggest delay area, it would be 7.3 seconds per vehicle delay. Now, does that, how do you determine what, what that means? Do you all, I don't know. I don't think it means that people will just what, at the, the longest delay will be 7.3 seconds. I, I know that we residents have a right, and you too. You more important than we, because we depend on you to make the decisions, but we have a right to attend the public hearing and to ask questions, et cetera, until September the 26th. This is not the final EIS. Does everybody know that? It's not the final one. This is the draft. The final one will be submitted sometime after, after September the 26th. So please, for everybody's sake, just don't jump in and accept. I'm going to call it a bribe because I feel like it is. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name's Lori McCollum. I'm actually from Rock Island, 3626 38th Street, but I'm a former Davenport resident, and I'm here speaking on behalf of a band that my husband is in. And I sent letters to, he sent letters via my email to you folks earlier this week, and I've had several nice responses. I've forwarded on to him, but he wanted, he and the band wanted a representation tonight from musical groups, since this is going to significantly impact so many of the bands that play down on, on the river. He, his band played at River Palooza last Thursday night, and there were about three, there were three trains that went through, about five minutes each. So that affected 15 minutes of their two-hour set. If a band, you know, typically, if, if this is gonna be tripled, that's gonna take nearly half their set. That's gonna have band, gonna have trains going through. And even if you have a quiet zone, as people have mentioned, there's a lot of screeching of breaks, and there's a lot of noise. I think it's going to have significant impact on musical performances. I think a lot of people are gonna choose other venues because their audiences are not gonna be happy, particularly if they have to cross the track and they're on the other side, and they can't get back out, or they can't get to the, to the show on time. So I think that's something significant to think about, because you've spent a lot of money on the riverfront, and it's beautiful. You've done a great job of getting things up and going down there for all of the musical venues that are in town. Also, I wanted to mention that this, the order in which the, these requirements seem to be happening seems backwards to me, that you guys have to make this decision about this $10 million theoretically tonight or within 10 days, I'm not sure what the timeline is, before this meeting even happens on the 13th of September, when there's going to be a, a review and an open hearing for the public, when they haven't even decided yet whether this merger's gonna occur. It almost sounds like the thought is it's a done deal, and, and maybe it is. But it seems to me that, that this is something that the cities should be able to hold off until the 13th before making that decision, because otherwise, I think Canadian Pacific will walk into that meeting saying, oh, everybody's already agreed, it's fine. There's no problem here. So I'm, I'm hoping you can possibly table this decision until the timeline allows for the public hearing on the 13th of September. The impact of this merger is also, I think, gonna more significantly impact the marginalized communities along the riverfront that are going to have to deal with more noise pollution and more air pollution. I know that the environmental impact studies said that there was really no impact on air pollution because it's going to take so many trucks off the road that it balances it out, but that's not comparing apples to apples, because the people who are gonna be impacted are a different set of people who have traditionally had more pollution from transportation in our country, and I think that's something else that needs to be considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello. My name is Carl Burkestran, Ten Oak Lane, Davenport. I arrived in Davenport about ten years ago after being out of Iowa for about forty years. Lived by Yosemite, one of the most beautiful places in the country for a number of years before I moved here. And when I got here, I was impressed. There was no traffic, had a beautiful riverfront. Ended up taking my two dogs along the river for a walk from Lindsay Park to Leech Park to Bettendorf and back. Three miles every day. It helped them keep their life expand and it helped me as well. I feel this project is really gonna jeopardize our whole dream of Davenport and a center of tourism in the Midwest. I think from being down at Farmer's Market, right at a ballgame, uh trying to make a transaction, buy some coffee. Train goes by. I know they're gonna silence the whistles, but as I walk my dog every day, what bothers me more than the whistles is the screech, the brakes. They could eliminate that, that would be a big relief. Because not only affects my ears, but I can imagine what it does to my dog's ears at fourteen years. But I also think about the waterfowl, about the migratory birds, about the cranes, the herring, about the eagles. And the reports I read from railroad ecology, they were presented to me. Have a great effect on the breeding cycles of these birds. And noise alone, uh just the increase of noise might affect that. And that's what we, you know, we show in the news every day, the eagles hatching. This is something that, you know, inspires us every spring to know what a great uh, and they have marsh. What's gonna happen to that if there's an oil spill? As I understand it, one gallon of crude oil will destroy a million gallons of water. And right now, folks, we don't have EPA in this country. It's been dismantled. And the cleanup on that may go for years before it's done. You guys have created something I'm proud. I take pictures every day. There's a new bridge in Bettendorf, uh the river, the city, night or day. You've moved some beautiful statues. You made uh just some vast improvements on the uh concrete bike trail. People use it for fundraisers. I have a business in the uh East Village. And I wonder how that's gonna affect, if I can't, if I have an emergency or something like that, how that's gonna affect uh people in my building. I'm tied up over the river. I can't get through. I've heard stories about trains being stopped and people just crawling underneath trains to get through. And that really concerns me. This looks like an accident waiting to happen. And I just want you to table it until we get all the reports in. And we can, you know, even the soil, what's that vibration gonna do? Repeated vibration gonna do through the limestone, the structures? And there's a lot of businesses along the river. The cement company, they cross the tracks twenty, thirty times a day. What's that gonna mean to getting the concrete out to projects? There's a lot of things to consider here. Not to mention air pollution. And uh I don't think we're gonna have a market anymore. I can't see how we can have a Leclerc concert. We're taking twenty, thirty years back. We need to go forward. And I think there's alternatives that we could do. We could build tunnels for the train, reroute it. Go to electric. Have this, if train's gonna be that big a business, we ought to make a national headquarters for the railroad right here in Davenport. I mean a museum. Make it another, you know, turn a lemon into lemonade. That's what we need to do. Because it's only gonna be problems for emergency. It's not, people are gonna remember their experience going to a ballgame. And maybe having a, a medical problem. And time is of the essence. And it didn't happen. Thank you for your time. Just, I'm asking to table until we can get more input from the studies. And uh till the thirteenth and we can have a open hearing so we can discuss it further. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Shelley Chambers. I'm a former member of the Davenport Riverfront Improvement Commission. Some of you may remember me from there. I'm also a resident of the fifth ward, formerly of the sixth ward, same house. Since redistricting. And I, I wanna just talk a little bit about the quality of life issues from my own personal perspective. We bought our house almost thirty years ago for the front porch that has a beautiful view of our gorgeous Mississippi River. And I've noticed that uh, I think since, maybe since the derecho and the building up of the rail bed, that the noise has become worse. I don't know if it's because tree cover, less tree cover and raised rails. I'm not sure. But it's already, with just the volume of trains we have going through now, it's already extremely burdensome to have a conversation on the porch. And it's not just due, as others have said, it's not just due to the train horns. It's also the, the engines, the engines and the wheels. Noise mitigation and quiet zones, I don't believe will fix that. And we have nine miles of front porches and businesses that will be affected by this. Life in our beautiful riverfront parks, as others have said, will not be the same. They will drastically change. And I, I think about myself walking along the river path just below Lindsay Park where the train tracks are very close to the path. And it's, it's scary if you're walking there and there's a train going by. You feel hemmed in, no way to get away from there in just certain sections of the path. You feel claustrophobic and vulnerable. I can, I can deal with that with a few trains a day. Uh maybe on my walk, there might be one. But if we have a tripling of that, I think that could become way more of an issue for people that choose to walk along the bike path. Others have mentioned the concerts on the river. The, again, the noise of the engines and the wheels going beyond the train whistles. I'm thinking about a meal at the freight house on the deck of the freight house. Those may not include conversation when those trains are coming through. So that wouldn't be a really attractive place to go eat. And then, of course, as others have mentioned too, risk of accident during a farmer's market Saturday. Is this increased risk worth it? I'm just curious to know. And then what economic impact does tripling train traffic through Davenport have for our community? I know that the city of Davenport, the Riverfront Commission and the Parks Department have worked hard for generations to create a beautiful riverfront for Davenport's citizens and her visitors. Again, as others have mentioned, there's the cruise ships that we, we have coming here now. Our riverfront amenities serve our citizens and our visitors. They make living here and spending money here an attraction. So I don't understand how increased train traffic would serve our community in the long term. I urge you to reject this deal right, you know, this deal for the sake of our community and our quality of life. Or at the very least, uh wait until after the public has had a chance to comment. So that others can weigh in. Many of us are just now beginning to become aware of what's happening. And I think uh it would be good to wait until September when stakeholders can weigh in. And I, I just, I just would urge you not to give up on this quality of life issue here. To consider waiting before making a final decision on behalf of your constituents. Because once you make this decision, there's no turning back. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Uh my name is Ken Croken. I live in the sixth ward at thirty-two fifteen East Locust Street. And um uh first, my uh, I don't envy you your position on this. I don't really see a winning hand uh coming out of this. But um uh I, I too would like to add my uh voice that um uh perhaps this vote should be delayed until after the public hearing. Last Saturday, um, oh, I'm sorry, I failed to acknowledge at the outset that I'm also a um, a, a part owner in the Quad City River Bandits. And at last Saturday night's game, there was a um, a visitor, park visitor who required uh emergency medical attention um and was happily able to get it very, very quickly. The, the tripling of rail traffic, uh I'm sure you understand jeopardizes not only access to our riverfront, um but, but also the safety of our riverfront. So um uh that's a, that's a grave concern for me. I uh, I'm also uh very concerned about the long-term economic um uh impact that this um development will, will have. Not only the baseball team and the, 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 the stadium, but every other business on the far side or I hate to use the expression, wrong side of the tracks, um uh will suffer. Not necessarily, um, it, it just from a brand perspective, I, I think people will be reluctant to go for fear they'll be locked in or locked out. We have uh at the ballpark often found uh large crowds of people showing up during the first and second inning of the game, complaining that they had been unable to get access to the park because they had to wait for a train. I, I think there is only um uh, we can only benefit from, from, from greater public impact uh with, excuse me, greater input. With all due respect to the speakers from Canadian Pacific, their history in this community does not suggest to me their grave concern for um being good neighbors and being involved. The raising of the tracks uh following that last flood suggested a um, a, a rather imperious relationship. And if they would like to demonstrate their um spirit of cooperation, then extending this offer uh until such time as public input uh can be properly received would be a great first step in showing that they are truly engaged with our community. I know that you, like everyone else in this room, regards our riverfront as one of our greatest and most beloved assets. And I also understand you are somewhat limited in your abilities to um dictate where we go from here as a community. But I, I do believe there again would be no harm resulting from further community input. And uh Canadian Pacific um would do well to come forward and extend its um deadlines in order to allow that to happen. We're, we're only talking about a couple of weeks. Thank you very much for your time and again, um, good luck with this.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, Mayor Alderman. Thank you for your service, first of all, and your time tonight. And your openness to listen to perspectives. You know, when I get around a mic, oh, there's no stopping me, but thank goodness you have a timer on me tonight. Um I wanna start by credentializing myself. I am a lifelong proud resident of Davenport, Iowa. I have lived, had the privilege of living all over the country. Was married to a guy in the Navy and was in a lot of, all the coasts. And it wasn't until I came back as in my twenties that I actually visited the riverfront. And my dad took me down there with my two kids and he rode his bike and I ran along and my kids rode their bikes. And I heard sounds, I remember this clearly, of birds I had never heard before. I saw the, I had never been to the river. I had never paid attention to the river. And it is what they say it is. It is a gem. It is something to be appreciated, valued. And it is a worldwide attraction. People come from all over the world to see the Mississippi River and it is at our doorstep. We have, as a city, invested and made bets on that riverfront. We are the only town that doesn't have a flood wall. We bear the brunt of that year after year. And we take that risk and we have chosen to do that, to honor the river. It is wrong to throw in the towel at this point. I'm asking that you stand up for the citizens of your city and the surrounding cities. I'm glad to see people from Rock Island and other towns here because we are, we have a blindfold on if we think this isn't a Davenport issue. This is a Quad City and beyond issue. And we can decide, and we're asking you to be our messenger, who we are. Who is Davenport? Are we a victim of circumstance because the big boys are coming through town? And they're throwing something at us and we're just gonna take it? Or are we the strongest peg on that bench? And there's a lot of pegs on the bench along the river, across the country that are like us. But they're not as strong as Davenport. We can be that peg that says, no, slow down. Let's gather this bench together. And let's not do this. We're asking you to be the one. I'm wearing my Live Uncommon shirt tonight. Because one of the main messages and mantras of it is it only takes one to change the world. Be that one. All of you, please have the courage to slow down and listen to your citizens and just hear us out. You're gonna hear a lot about reports, about facts, about environment. They're important. But this is our town. This is the history of our town and the long-term future of our town. Are we gonna be Train Town? That's Davenport, Iowa? Or are we going to be Rivertown, what we've always been? We have invested in the downtown. I'm a lifelong resident to further credentialize myself and why I'm here. And I'm not just a squeaky wheel complaining about something that doesn't make sense to me. We, as homeowners and business, we pay half a million dollars in taxes every year. In the last two years, we have put together a new community event. We are lifelong dedicated to philanthro- philanthropy. I can't even say that word. Philanthropy. We believe in our, we believe in doing the right thing. We put our money where our mouth is. Just last year, in the last thirteen months, we have out of our own pocket put, my, my husband's gonna be sad to hear this, five hundred thousand dollars into a community event that is on the river. I say this not to say what a great person I am, what a great people Russell's are. We put, we believe in this town. We are investing personally in the greater good, what is right for this town. These choices, I'm glad to hear another person about with a band interest. We had a major event. We're trying to bring back to this community a great event in the summer. Those trains were not right on the doorstep. They were across the road. They're not triple the size they will be with this merger. They highly impacted this event. They're not triple the size they will be with this merger. They highly impacted this event. Am I at my time already?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Honorable Mayor, Councilman, thank you for listening. My name is Molly Newell. I second the emotions that I've heard. I too am a businessperson in Davenport. Have the One River Place facility, about thirty-seven thousand square foot of space for small businesses. I run a business incubator here on the river. Oh, I'd say about seventy-five feet from the tracks. Really close. Also, I'm a resident here in Davenport in the sixth ward overlooking the river also. And I do hear the trains from my porch. And again, I don't mind the whistles nearly as bad as the sound of the, what they call wayfaring noise coming from the tracks themselves. So I just want to say that tripling and quadrupling the train traffic and the train noise really flies in the face of everything that I've done as a citizen on different committees. The Riverfront Action Committee, when there was one, working with the Riverfront Levy Commission, when it was called that, working on comprehensive plan to unite all the greenways and the waterways vertically and horizontally to connect the bike trails and everybody to the river, excuse me, so everybody could enjoy it. So we all want what's best for Davenport. I don't question that for anybody here. I understand that the council feels powerless to reject this ten million dollar offer, but you are not powerless. We do not need to take what the railroad dishes out. Together, we are strong. I like the comment about the peg, you know, the strong peg on the bench. We have the most to lose, as you know. We have the most riverfront, and we think we're getting more than the next guy. Well, guess what? Nobody's getting enough for what they're proposing to take. I would propose that the council vote down this ten million because it's a poor compromise. Please don't sell us out. The railroad has engaged city after city to preempt future opposition. We know why. They're picking one, they're picking off one city after another, one at a time, to divide and conquer through this technique. You know, it's an economic prostitution, in my opinion, because they can't win any other way. Yielding now will cause irreparable damage to our community and the future of our place in the Midwest, our place on the river, our place in history, and how we celebrate the future. This has been said already. I guess the railroad merger causes more harm to Davenport than any other city in its path. The recent report that came out last Friday afternoon says there will be irreparable... Or I'll get to that in a second, but I want to say, second the motion someone said earlier about the STB not being an impartial review board. They are definitely not an impartial review board, yet they have come out and said there will be considerable adverse damage and repercussions. My building's historic. To shake that ground four times as much as it is, I got eighteen sixty-seven mortar in my limestone of my building. Out of our old pocket, we have brought the building back to life, all three floors. We did not accept money from the city. We did not accept money from the feds, yet it remains historic, and it's, I think, a real landmark here. So yes, I'm vested, and I don't want to lose my investment, but I dare say, even if we stick with it forevermore, there's going to be little additional investment because people are not going to want to come down to the river for all the reasons that have been mentioned. So the magnificent harm to the city, to our safety, in some cases to health, and definitely to the environment, I would say is huge. I understand that attorneys from Canada flew down and talked to representatives here, but an advocate for Davenport may have told you that any measure that causes this much magnificent harm to the city must go to a referendum. Someone should have told you that the council has a fiduciary responsibility to not be, well, to be transparent and truthful.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening. Cindy Winkler, Sixth Thirty Court in Davenport. One of the things that I think about, other than all of the things that have been mentioned, is the wake that will be created when we have a flood and what will happen to our ability to maintain the stability of any structure that we put up to hold the water back. I am a state representative. I have the riverfront from Mound Street to the end of the county. So I represent Buffalo as well. And I know that the wake created for them is tremendous with the current trains that are running. And when we think about how we multiply that and what it might do when we are trying to meet the needs of a disaster and the wake that could be created by three times the amount of trains going through and the amount of money that the city will have to spend to mitigate that, I think that it's just one more piece of the puzzle. I certainly know that you're between a rock and a hard place with this situation. And it's unfortunate that it is, the deadline, as I understand it, is ahead of the public hearing that the federal government has put together. If Canadian Pacific then will use a decision that you make now as any kind of reasoning or rationale to the fact that it won't create a problem, that they, that they would triple the number of trains, I think that's unfortunate because not only are you between a rock and a hard place, but then you'll be used. And you'll be used as a tool that will potentially create more expenditure for the citizens of Davenport. I don't, I haven't read, and I might have missed it, but what the cost will be for the city of Davenport to mitigate all of the issues that will be created by increasing the number of trains. I haven't seen it yet, and I think that that is a consideration. It should be a proportional response from Canadian Pacific in regard to what they are offering because mitigation will be every year. And I don't envy you. I don't know if you have the opportunity to delay this decision, but I think that there are so many extenuating circumstances that are created, and this is such a significant decision to make. I hope that you take the time that you need to make the decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Britt Vikström. I live at twelve-twelve East Tenth Street, number seven in Davenport. I'm in the fifth ward. Tim Kelly is my very responsive alderman. Thank you. I respectfully ask that you table the decision until the September meeting. I am the great granddaughter, the granddaughter and the niece of railroaders. I am very familiar with railroad, what it does, and also the damage a railroad can do to a body that was impressed upon us from as soon as we could walk. And I do fear that with more trains, more people will be tempted to illegally cross the tracks. My grandfather was an engineer for the Burlington Northern. You can't stop a train car going sixty. You can't stop it going five. I've also been stopped at train crossings for an hour at a time, even though legally it's ten minutes. I know there are extenuating circumstances, but being blocked at ten for an hour at a time with the current train schedule, I can only imagine with that being tripled. So please, I ask you to respectfully table your decision until the September meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, everyone. Jim Russell. I live in the fifth ward and appreciate the service and the time to speak from all of you. I just want to say really one thing. Ten million is a lot of money. And I know it's a take it or leave it, two-week kind of thing, and there's a risk of getting less. There may not be an opportunity of getting more, but ten million, as you guys already know, buys a fire station. Ten million doesn't even buy a skybridge. So ten million's not a lot of money. It's not a lot of money in contrast to the economic and social and all the impact you already heard from everyone else. So I'm a little bit of a gambler. I would roll the dice and say no and see if we can do better, knowing that we might not, but I'd still take that risk if I were sitting in your shoes. So thank you for the opportunity to share my thought, and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Kevin O'Brien, twelve-oh-three Garfield Court. Regards to the huge increase in traffic that they're discussing on the railroad. You know, one of the greatest places to have lunch or anything is to sit down by the river. And now that you've got the freight house all fixed up, sit on the deck and have lunch there. And something we frequently did, especially during COVID time. But, you know, now already we have a lot of trains going through there. And when a train goes through there, you might as well, we just stop talking for ten minutes because that's how long the train goes through there. You know, some of it's the horn, but just the rattle and so on, the blockage of the riverfront. It just doesn't seem like it's good for Davenport to go from eight trains to twenty-two, twenty-four, and who, how many might they increase it to in the future? You know, you're talking about two and a half hours or more. It takes about ten minutes or so, and sat there and timed it for each train to go through. You're talking about two and a half hours or so per day. That traffic won't be, you won't be able to see the river, and you won't be able to drive through, down, or from the river. And what kind of requirement does Davenport have as far as like if there's an emergency on the riverfront and a 911 call? And you got to wait ten minutes to get across to respond to it, whether it's police or medic? And you're going to take, we got, you know, about eighty minutes during the whole day that the riverfront is blocked right now. But are you willing to jump forward to two and a half hours or perhaps more? You know, if they loosen up the, you know, does Davenport get any liability for not being able to respond to 911 calls? If there's emergency at the ballpark or at the riverfront, if there's a concert? You know, sometimes at the ballpark, you've got five thousand people there. Somebody, ten minutes, fifteen minutes extra can mean a lot, life and death. So I would oppose this. You know, the ten million may be more than what you get, but if by signing off with it, you give up your right to go forward and speak against this and try to negotiate something better because there's other better routes the railroad could take. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name's Bill Gluba, twenty-four, twenty-one, Gainesville, third ward. Let me just say, folks here, amazing, honorable, positive reaction from our city folks. I'm impressed what you're saying here tonight, just as a citizen. As we can go, I was down here by myself. But Honorable Mayor Mattson and members of Davenport City Council, I come here tonight to share my thoughts on perhaps the most threatening issue, the most threatening issue ever to face our great city, the pending thirty-one billion dollar merger between the Canadian Pacific and Kansas City Southern Railroads. Let me say at the outset, I firmly believe, I honestly believe that you feel this ten million dollar deal that you're preparing to accept is the best you can get. I respectfully, but I respectfully disagree. Been around this a long time, been through lots of similar sort of kind of things. Nothing quite like this that's going to destroy our city, but I know you mean well. Okay? Just want to make that clear. And I appreciate that, but the decision you make here tonight will be life-threatening to our citizens, disastrous to our city, and forever wreak havoc on the most beauti, our most beautiful Mississippi riverfront. That's the tragic reality. Cut through all the other. That's the reality. Now let me be fair. All negotiations should be a win-win for all parties. This one is not. In this vein, are there other more rural railroad lines that go through Iowa that could accomplish what Canadian Pacific wants to do? Two, are there other possible routes around Davenport that could be developed that would avoid our downtown area? What about an underground subway-type rail tunnel? Perhaps under River Drive or maybe running from Tremont to Marquette Street? All over the country, go to any major city, and, you know, there's tunnels under streets and rivers and et cetera. So that's, such a tunnel would eliminate the need for all, most of what we're talking about, the noise control, pedestrian overpasses, crossing signals, and bridges, except for the one that's proposed and I support, love to see, down around Concord Street and over River Drive there. Perhaps we could trade land on which the Canadian Pacific runs now, you know, that area we're talking about, and turn for giving and working with the state to give them a right-of-way under River Drive. Think about that. Subway going down leaves the area affected under River Drive. It happens in other cities. And we can get back that other land they have for future development parks. Some visionaries believe that underground tunnels are the wave of the future in highly congested areas. For example, if you Google, just Google Elon Musk and his tunnel company, you will learn that he is developing such tunnels. Shows them on videos. I'm not qualified to say that this could be the only answer to the problem of having twenty-two or more oil tanker trains roaring through our city and blocking traffic every day, but it might be. I'm not the expert. I'm not here to tell you anything. I am. This is probably, this is, this probably... Oh, I remember I was going to say, we built the West Side Diversion Tunnel for forty-three million dollars. Big deal. About as long as our downtown area is, you know. So how much would this, another approach cost? I don't know, but it's your responsibility to at least look into it, not ask the railroad what they think. Maybe a combination of federal, state, and local and private financing could be put together to pay for such a tunnel. Since the federal environmental report released just a few days ago shows that Scott County and Davenport in particular will sustain the most irreparable damage of any city by this railroad merger, I suggest the city ask the Surface Transportation Board for a quote carve-out exception for Davenport and help us develop a more safe and acceptable alternative, like a subway tunnel or something better. Any decision or negotiation has to be a win-win for both sides. This deal does not. Table it, listen to our citizens, and try to do better. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hello, my name's Eileen O'Brien. I live at twelve-oh-three Garfield Court in Davenport. It's kind of hard to follow after Bill Gluba, and before that, my husband. But I just want to add also my concern and weighing in against accepting the merger and the money. I know ten million dollars might sound like a lot of money. I know ten million dollars might sound like a lot of money, but I think that the city has to do a lot of work to make it work. So all that money is not going to the city. It's gonna make, be used to make some repairs. And I don't even think ten million dollars a year would be enough. I just do have grave concerns. Bill Gluba stated some creative ideas. I think it should be looked into and tabled and have lots more discussion. And I just do feel very strongly against it. I know it's a big, weighty decision. I, someone said you're between a rock and a hard place. Well, actually, you're between the railroad ties, but it's a tough one. But please, really think long and hard, and I'd like to preserve our city and rather not have this. I, I don't mind an occasional train. It's a very, can be nice sitting down there and hearing about the ballpark and by the freight house. But triple it, it's not gonna be so nice. And I have seen, when I like to go to the Riverdance Games often, I have seen when a train was coming, people jumping across the tracks to try to beat the train. And then, you know, I also wanted to get to the game, but I, you know, not as young and quick as they are. But still, not a wise thing, and if we triple the traffic, people are gonna get frustrated, and they wanna get somewhere, and they might make rash decisions. So, for the noise aspect and the time, waiting for trains, and then people maybe taking risky moves there to get across the tracks, I worry about it. So, please, thank you for your consideration. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name's Deo Gilmar, sixth ward. You know, I always have an opinion about something. I believe there's a total misunderstanding of the proposed merger of these two railroads. Some people believe the approval or denial of this merger is totally dependent on the approval of the city of Davenport. This belief is false. The deciding approval or denial will be made solely by the Surface Transportation Board. So regardless of the outcome of any discussion or vote tonight, it's not up to you. Now they talk about hazardous materials. If you've got a hazardous material that's gonna go from point A to point B, do you want it on a truck, or do you want it on a rail? Personally, I would prefer the rail. Now, accepting the compensation agreement that, that Canadian Pacific has offered is not an endorsement of the merger. Those two are totally separate. So you, you can accept, you can accept the compensation, but still be against the merger. But legally, the railroad's not required to give us anything. So, yeah, we can, we can snub them, we can, we can call them names, we can do all that stuff, and then they can say, okay, job's done. So, it's up to you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, so I'll make some comments, and I'll ask council if they want. So first, I, what? I apologize. Is there a motion to approve? There's a motion, second, to approve. Okay, I'll take privilege and say some comments first. So first, appreciate everybody who came down, who spoke, and who certainly is concerned about Davenport. So thanks to the public for showing up, speaking, thanks to the city staff, STP staff, citizens, CP, council, Riverfront Improvement Commission, and everybody that we've engaged to discuss. The Surface Transportation Board determines whether a rail merger is approved and what mitigation the railroad applicant is required to provide, not the city council and the city of Davenport. It's the STP that holds the public meetings and gathers public input on the proposed merger. Our process by law is to put this agreement on the public agenda and vote on it at a public meeting. Tonight is the second night that the public has had opportunity to speak, and we had a speaker, of course, last night. I believe the city council's role and obligation is to ensure that our city does not find itself in a position where the merger mercs forward, and we have zero dollars invested by Canadian Pacific in our community. That outcome would be completely irresponsible, in my opinion. We have done our due diligence. We have provided input to the STP numerous times. We researched the criteria used by the STP to order mitigation. We researched past outcomes in prior mergers, many approved by the STP. We estimated likely project costs, and we engaged with CP to get a commitment from CP to do more than what they will be required by the STP. The recently released draft environmental impact statement is consistent with our expectations based on our due diligence work. In our case, the draft EIS recommends the STP order very little mitigation, not even quiet zones. It essentially says CP would be required to pay the city of Davenport zero dollars. CP is agreeing to invest in our community more than ten million dollars, and we appreciate it of that. I appreciate the productive and collaborative working relationship we have developed with CP. I appreciate their willingness to engage us. I appreciate the citizens to engage us and speak out and share their perspectives. At the end of the day, the risk is, do we take the ten million dollars, invest in that money on the riverfront for mitigation, or risk the possible zero? Summary of the conclusion of the draft EIS, environmental impact study by the Office of Environmental Analysis. In preparing the draft EIS, OEI conducted an extensive analysis of the environmental impacts that could result from the applicant's proposed acquisition of Kansas City by CP. As discussed, based on consultation with federal, state, and local agencies, consultation with tribes, input provided by organizations and the public, and local agencies, consultation, and its own independent environmental analysis, the Office of Environmental Analysis has concluded that, apart from train noise, which could result in adverse impacts at some locations, the potential impacts of the proposed acquisition would be negligible, minor, and untemporary. A timeline of what we've been doing. This started for us about November twenty twenty-one. We made, we were made aware of public meetings in regard to the EIS for a merger railroad. Research began on railroad merger, and the process in general started, and many of us were engaged by, by week, every week. December twenty twenty-one, staff, we met with Canadian Pacific on overview of what the high-level plan was for potential mergers. Staff and council members participated in one of the virtual public options to gather input on the merger and stated opinion during the public meeting. Council, staff, and Riverfront Improvement Commission submitted impact papers to the Surface Transportation Board with impacts and consequences. January twenty twenty-two, council and staff met virtually again with the STP to share a position paper and understand the mitigations the STP might offer if the city and CP were not to come to an advanced settlement. Staff met virtually with several, and I included, other potential impacted cities to review likely outcomes with an agreement based on precedent of railroad mergers, and there are many. Council members and staff met with CP representatives to review position and concerns and start at point for negotiations. Staff hires, we hired a consult, council approved, and hiring a consulting firm to review quiet zone engineering needs. February twenty-two, staff continues analysis and legal reviews, past precedent, likely outcomes, STB mandates, if there is not an agreement, based on past agreements with other places. Council and staff hold second meeting with CP representatives, to include me. March twenty twenty-two, council and staff hold third meeting with CP representatives to discuss now negotiations of where we can deal with. April twenty twenty-two, staff and council hold second meeting with STP to review third, likely outcomes based on current status of the draft potential EIS. Determine that the maximum amount of relief granted by STP will be a quite possible quiet zone, estimated cost of maybe three million dollars. Staff continues to work with our consultants specific to railroad mergers to discuss likely outcomes and based on historic precedent. We received, the council received a letter from the Riverfront Improvement Commission today, and I'll read. Community investment settlement agreement with Canadian Pacific. Riverfront Improvement Commission, for people who don't know, probably are one of our best partners in how we deal with the riverfront. Several months ago, along with the city of Davenport, the River Improvement Commission expressed and submitted concerns regarding the proposed merger of Canadian Pacific and Kansas City Southern. Today, we want to convey our support for the community investment and settlement agreement with Canadian Pacific Railroad Company and encourage the city council to approve the same. The commission understands that through good faith negotiations, many of the concerns outlined below are being adequately addressed with this agreement. In fact, the discretionary eight million dollars will fund infrastructure related to rail pedestrian vehicle noise concerns, such as establish a quiet zone for Mount and Marquette, as well as other critical projects. In addition, the two million dollar commitment will fund a grade separation in South Concord, which will allow rail, vehicle, pedestrian, bicycle to coexist in a much safer and enjoyable environment. The Riverfront Improvement Commission appreciates the work of the city council in ensuring that Davenport's riverfront is accessible, safe, and dynamic destination for all our citizens and visitors to the community. In reference to the money, the use of the money will be discussed in detail with council very soon in future endeavors. So I, again, appreciate everybody that came, and I wanna give a little background, a little timeline, little things that we've been done. We have been engaged fully with many of our partners, many of our cities, many of the STP staff, in reviewing the history, the participation, the understanding of what the STP wants to do, what the potential is, what the mitigation could happen. And we, I believe that this council, this staff, and CP, we have done our due diligence. So, if any council member wanna speak, I will engage that opportunity. I see Alderman Gripp.
Thank you, thank you, Your Honor. So first off, I wanted to thank everyone who came out tonight to voice your concerns. I can tell that we have a shared love and passion for our riverfront. I've also received emails from the public concerned about the impacts of the merger. I assure you that I share those concerns with you. And it's clear to me that many of you are going through the same mental process that I went through when I first heard about the intended merger in December. I mean, really, it nearly ruined my Christmas. I was so upset about it for weeks, thinking about what the impacts would be. So, to be clear, if Davenport had the choice of having seven trains a day, or twenty, twenty-two trains a day, come through our riverfront, we'd prefer seven. But to, to reiterate, we're not voting to approve or not approve the merger. That decision will be made by the Surface Transportation Board, not by the city of Davenport. The process we've gone through, since CP has announced the merger, is one of evaluation, risk mitigation, and doing what is best for the city of Davenport. We've looked at the merger process. We've studied past precedent, which there's plenty, set by mergers that have happened in the past, and we've looked at what other cities have received in settlements. And we've had discussions with the STP, we've had discussions with other cities, and we've gone through the process. Here's the conclusions I came to. The STP is very likely to approve this merger. Our supporter objection is one very small piece of the puzzle, and we are very unlikely to be the voice that sways the STP one way or the other, especially in light of our neighboring cities already reaching agreements. If we went to arbitration, we would likely be awarded quiet zones only. After the draft EIS, we changed that to we would very likely be awarded zero dollars. So certainly, we could object to the merger and try to fight it, but the outcome will very likely be the same, an approved merger. So that's why I've come to the conclusion that the settlement is the best option for the city. It's a good insurance policy. It gets us quiet zones, something we've wanted for quite some time. It gets us money for pedestrian crossings, and it gives us an opportunity for grade separation at our water pollution control plant. Is it ideal? No. Is it the best deal for the city, given the circumstances? I certainly think so. I also wanna point out that many cities who have come to these agreements with CP put this on their agenda and voted on it before the draft EIS came out. We very purposefully said we would not put this, we would not vote on this agreement until the draft EIS came out, so that the public would have an opportunity to weigh in, which is what you are doing tonight, and that was very important to us. So if we, if we vote this agreement down, or if we table it, it is highly probable that the outcome is going to be that the merger gets approved, Davenport gets zero dollars, and we, the city, are going to be trying to figure out how to fund quiet zones, pedestrian crossings, and grade separations out of our capital improvement budget over the next several years. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp and Bales. Very good. Brian, please call the role on the motion to approve this agreement.
Condon?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Jokjin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Cornet?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Anne Ortiz?
Yes.
I think yes, Your Honor.
Thank you. The motion passes. Next item is a motion to approve beer and liquor license applications, new license, new owner, temporary permit, temporary outdoor area. And I'll read the, all the respective ones, because they're kinda related to the same, and then I'll ask for a motion. Hy-Vee Market Cafe, I'll pause first, I'll take privilege and pause just because it looks like a lot of people are leaving, so don't wanna disturb the interaction with the council. I thank you very much for your participation tonight. Even though this is a serious, little one, it, you might wanna listen to this. Okay, thank you for your indulgence of, I'll read again. Hy-Vee Market Cafe, Hy-Vee, twenty-two hundred West Cafe Road, cafe area premises up, premises update to include entire store, license type C. Next one, different, first one's Ward two, second one's Ward four. Hy-Vee Market Cafe, Hy-Vee, twenty-three fifty-one West Locust Street, cafe area premises update to include entire store, license type C. Ward six, Hy-Vee Market Cafe, forty, forty sixty-four East Fifty-third Street, premises update to include entire store, license type C. Is there any public with comment? I think that's one of them. Yes, any public with comment, comment on any of those? Seeing none? Counsel. Very good. Will Alderman move? Move? Is there a second? Now, is there any discussion? Alderwoman Lee, I apologize again.
Yes, if somebody from Hy-Vee would come up and describe what you're expecting this to, this to create, and why you're doing it.
Good evening. My name is Dory Decker, and I'm the district store director for Hy-Vee. My name is Dory Decker, and I'm the district store director for Hy-Vee at the Utica Ridge and West Locust Street. Really, we're just looking to, as we upnue, as we renew our licenses, we're just looking to look towards the future, and if at some point we have like a food hall concept where there would be seating outside of the cafe area, it would allow our customers to, to sit outside of the cafe area and, and take, you know, part in all the food options that we have. At this point, we're not looking to do anything more than that.
So you're not expecting to have people walking around the store while they're shopping with alcohol?
No.
That's not what you're aiming at?
No.
But could you do that with this approval? Would that be, yeah, they could.
They, that is not what we do, I guess, specifically. That is not what we're looking for. It's just having the ability to have seating outside of the cafe area.
You're good, Alderman Lee. Alderwoman Lee, thank you. Alderman Ortiz.
Actually, I will.
Yes.
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, with that answer, that changes a lot of my questions. Would you guys put some kind of condition? I, I just have a lot of concern with, when you say whole premise. Say, aisle eight, somebody that is twenty-two years old goes, buys, you know, is there gonna be a limit on how many drinks per person could buy at one time? Let's say they buy two Jack and Cokes, for example. Go back to aisle eight, give it to their twenty-year-old brother, niece, friend, whatever. You know, there, there's just a lot of red flags that I see in this when you say whole store or premise. You know, is there something that you would feel comfortable, maybe, you know, put some conditions on it that would say just outside area, only not up and down the food aisles or something? You know, and then hours of operation, or that could be served, liquor could be served? Is there, do you have any, is it from?
Sure, we would follow the same guidelines that we currently follow within the cafe, which I'm sure are dictated by the, the rules of operation. As far as individuals that would take it out, I think it would be the same kinda come to market that we have now, where, I mean, we take the responsibility seriously, and, and there's always folks in that aisle one area. And again, we don't have the concept to come to the, the market right now, but in those situations, if you can kinda, like that whole aisle one area where there's the food options, and then it's, it's still very much within that area, the seediness, because it's convenient to those offerings.
Okay, okay. Thank you for your answer. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Ortiz. Alderman Gripp.
Thank you, Your Honor. So the way this reads is that what, what we're voting on is to, to be able to have alcohol in, in the entire store, but it sounds like the intent of the petitioner is that they would like to be able to serve alcohol on an, on an outdoor cafe, which we routinely approve outdoor areas for, for alcohol. Is that right?
Correct. I believe on this cycle, we're approving one for Utica Ridge, an outdoor area. I believe on this cycle, we're approving one for Utica Ridge, an outdoor area.
So if the intent is truly for outdoor consumption connected to the cafe, I really have no problem with that. But that's not the way, that's not the way the application reads. What it reads is, and many stores are doing this nationally, which is, we're going to sell alcohol in our store, we're going to allow people to drink alcohol while we're shopping. I won't get too far into it. I oppose that. I don't think that's something we should normalize in Davenport, and I don't want to do alcohol for the entire store. Certainly, I'm supportive of alcohol for an outdoor cafe. I think that makes total sense, so. But either way, we have a routine process for that, and we would need to, is that the way the petitioner wants to go? And we could amend it. But I won't support entire store license, is what I'm saying. Thank you.
Alderman Jordan. Thank you, Alderman Grip. Alderman Jordan.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. And just a question for corporate counsel, just another clarification. So say, you know, we make the recommendation this evening not to approve this, these license. I mean, does that affect the whole entire license? Or again, is this just specific to, I guess, this particular use?
Without reviewing their file, I'm going to go off the top of my head. I believe this Class C liquor license gives them all the privileges that they need, so they only have the one license. Now, what I would suggest happening, I'm not sure that we can amend the premises drawing at this point in the process and have council approve it tonight and amend the drawing. I'm not sure about that. So what I would recommend is that we table it a cycle and get a revised drawing on the premises, and you'll see it on the next cycle. They can continue serving because they're timely filed.
Well, taking that cue, if there's no other comments, then I'll make a motion to table these items for one cycle.
There's a motion and a second to table. There's no discussion on a table, so Brian, please call the roll on the table for one
Lee. Ortiz.
Yes.
Jobchin.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Cornet.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Grip.
Yes.
And McGinnis.
Yes.
Nine yeses, your honor.
Very good. The table's approved, so I'd encourage, obviously, staff and Hy-Vee to work out the particular drawings or whatever's needed, right? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, council, for the discussion. Next item is there a motion for approval, all items on consent agenda? Motion is second. Brian, please call the roll for all items on consent agenda.
Kelly.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Cornet.
Yes.
Grip.
Yes.
Jobchin.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Lee.
Condon. Yes.
And Ortiz.
Yes.
Nine yeses, your honor.
Very good. Consent's approved. The next item is other ordinances, resolutions, and motions, and we have one for this evening, but first we have to do a motion to suspend the rules. Is there a motion to suspend the rules? Motion second to suspend the rules. Brian, please call the roll for suspension.
Cornet. Grip.
Yes.
Jobchin.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Lee.
No.
Dunn.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
And Ortiz.
Yes.
A yeses and one no, your honor.
Very good. Aids approved, okay? So now we can discuss the resolution to be added. Resolution approving the following public ground closure on the listed date time to hold an outdoor event. Third Missionary Baptist Church Fellowship Picnic, 222 West 14th Street, Sunday, August 14, 2022, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. The closure is portion of the North-South Alley, west of the church, between West 14th and West 15th Streets, and Harrison and Main. Is there any public with comment? Seeing none, will an alderman move the resolution?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Brian, please call the roll for this resolution.
Dunn.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Jobchin.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Grip.
Yes.
Ortiz.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
And Cornet. Nine yeses, your honor.
Very good. Their resolution is approved. The next item is there any public with business for stuff that was not on the agenda? Please come to the podium. Love to know your name, ward, or address. If you're not from here, love to know where you are. You'll have five minutes, and thank you.
Michael Ross, Second Ward. I came up here three weeks ago talking about the crime in this community. It's been very mute. We had, from what somebody said, two kids driving around 12 hours, spray painting cars. What is it going to take for this council to address the criminal activity that we have? Do the residents got to actually call the guardian angels back in this community? We're tired of it. We're done. Lock the city down on curfew. Have National Guard, somebody patrol. Why are eight, nine, and 10-year-olds running around in my area at 2:00 in the morning? I've spoken with a 73-year-old elderly lady last week. She fears for her life. She only want to leave her house. Is this going to be another Seattle/Washington, where we just let criminals take over? I asked everybody, mayor, legal, council people, start drafting bills. These criminals need to be held accountable. This catch-and-release with these juveniles? Three of them got released last week. They were back out stealing cars. Two cars up by Fairmont. Same kids. Can't this city talk to the state about the judge that's allowing these kids to go back You have multiple residents on Davenport Police than when they were trying to find out the identity of these two kids. You have multiple residents that are tired of it. They have specifically tagged Davenport Police and said, "Do something before we do." Is that what it's going to take to wake up this city? I'm a community activist. If I have to fly to New York to have a meeting with the guardian angels, I will. I'm not going to sit there and let the criminals have their time and day while everybody that sits here. I haven't heard one thing from you, mayor, at all. The last-
So I'm not going to engage right here, but I'm happy to talk to you after.
Yep.
But you must not be listening, then.
Sorry. But something's got to go on. We've got to take our streets back, guys. Something has to be done. Make new laws. I spoke three weeks ago, Parent Accountability Act. Start listening to the police scanners, the HBO calls handled by officers. My taxes go to, you know, have police. I back the blue, but start writing tickets. That's all.
Thank you.
Gene Seivers, C-24 North Main Street, Davenport. Unaccustomed, as I am to public speaking, I would like to say a few thousand well-chosen words. No, good news, it won't be a thousand. I've been a downtown resident for over 30 years, and I don't know where the time's gone, but I do want to ask the question, one-way or two-way, which is the safe way for the downtown neighborhood, the neighbors, and all the pedestrians? Either way, the right-hand turn on red should be eliminated in the downtown area. It's very dangerous, and Gillsburg has gone ahead and eliminated their right-hand turn on red in the downtown area many years ago. It's just not safe. About the one-way, while I was crossing Third and Brady one morning, I was struck by a car, which was on Third Street, and then turned onto Brady. I was crossing Brady and had the light. I was in the crosswalk. It was 8:00 in the morning. Someone was in a hurry to get to work, I guess. So the result of that was I was hospitalized for a week, had surgery, and I have some permanent injury. So which way is the safe way when you're considering the one ways or the two ways? Do the research. Do the research. The neighbors in the downtown area are entitled to a safe intersection, as are all the pedestrians. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, City Minister of Spiegel, is there anything else? There is not. Is there a motion to adjourn? All in favor to adjourn? Be safe, drink water.